To stand for the presentation of colors by the Cub Pack Thirty-Eight Popper Tent Pressing Church.
Color yard, back. Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Scouts salute.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stew. Color yard, come up. Color yard retreat.
Everybody could remain standing for the invocation given by Reverend Michael Covington, First Wesleyan Church of Kannapolis.
Let's pray. Father, in your word, you admonish us to pray for those in leadership. Lord, you haven't encouraged us only to pray for those with whom we agree, but to pray for those who have been elected. And Lord, we come tonight to lift up this board and ask that you would take and use them, Lord. Give them clarity of mind, clarity of purpose. And Lord, we pray that tonight, that everything that will be said and done in this place will be focused upon the issues at hand, not on the individuals presenting those things. Lord, we do thank you for the Cubs who have even opened us today and reminded us of the great land in which we live. Use this time for your glory and for the upbuilding of this county and your kingdom in Christ's name. Amen.
If the youngsters from Popper Tent Pressing Church could come forward, introduce yourself. Tell us a little about yourself, and if you will then go to your left, my right, Commissioner Burridge will have a pen for you. And when you come on up, if you need to move the microphone down, feel free to do so. Yes, sir.
My name is Duncan McNeil.
Ms. McNeil, where do you go to school?
Cox Mill Elementary.
What grade are you in, Duncan?
Fourth grade.
Thank you, Duncan. If you'll go over to your left to see Commissioner Burridge, he has a pen for you.
My name is Garrett Brower.
Garrett, what, how old are you?
What?
How old are you?
Eight.
Where you go to school?
North Side Christian Academy.
And what grade are you in?
Second.
Thank you, Garrett. Why don't you go over to your left to see Commissioner Burridge? Yes, sir.
My name's Ethan.
Ethan, where do you go to school?
WR-OD.
And what grade are you in?
Fourth.
How old are you?
Nine.
Thanks, Ethan. Go over here to your left. Yes, sir.
My name is Grayson.
Grayson, what grade are you in?
Second.
Where you go to school?
Cox Mill.
How you like it?
Good.
You like being a Comet?
Yeah.
There you go, Garrett. Why don't you go on over there? Yes, sir.
My name's Aiden.
Ethan?
No, Aiden.
Aiden. What grade are you in, Aiden?
Fourth grade.
Where do you go to school?
WR-OD.
You like your pack master?
Yes.
Good. Why don't you go over here? Yes, sir.
My name is Jacob Brown.
Ms. Jacob, where, what grade you go, or grade are you in?
Second.
Where do you go to school?
Carlyford Elementary School.
You like fur?
Yes.
And they're the Falcons, right? Go over there. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Alec McCoy.
Alton?
Alec.
Alec? What grade are you in, Alec?
Fourth.
Where do you go to school?
WR-OD.
You enjoying it?
Yes.
You getting good grades?
Kinda.
There you go. I'm not going over there.
My name is Mitchell Bulwark.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
My name is Mitchell Bulwark.
Mitchell, what grade are you in?
Second.
Where do you go to school?
Carlyford Elementary School.
The Fur, the Falcons. Who's your principal?
Mr. Roberts.
You don't see Mr. Roberts very often, do you? Good. Why don't you come over here? Yes, sir.
Blade Rattler.
I'm sorry?
Blade Rattler.
Billy? What grade is, what grade are you in?
Rattler.
Ah, where do you go to school?
WR-D elementary.
And what grade are you in?
Fourth.
You enjoying it? Well, you have a good Christmas. Thank you, sir. Why don't you come over here? Yes, sir.
Dylan.
I'm sorry?
Dylan.
Dylan? What grade are you in, Dylan?
Second.
Where do you go to school?
Odell.
Odell? You like your teacher?
Yeah.
She teach you a lot?
Yeah.
She's a good teacher, isn't she? Good. Thank you. Why don't you come over here? Yes, sir.
My name is Evan Argiros.
Yes, sir.
I go to Odell Elementary. I'm in fourth grade.
Okay.
And I'm nine years old.
Thank you, sir. Why don't you come over here? Yes, sir.
My name is Brayden. And my school is Odell. And I'm eight years old.
Great. Thank you, sir. Uh-oh. What do we got here?
My name is Jacob Lafferty.
Yes, sir. Where do you go to school?
I'm homeschooled, and I go to Battlefield Prep.
And you're number one in your class?
Well, I'm one of two, so yes.
And I know your mom and dad are very proud of you, aren't they? Good. Why don't you go over here? Thank you, Jacob.
My name's Ben.
Ben Lafferty, right?
Right.
Okay. Where do you go to school, Ben?
Homeschooled.
You're smarter than your brother, aren't you?
Yeah.
You learn all that from your mom and your dad, right?
No.
No? And what grade are you, what grade do you, are you in, Ben?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. Why don't you go over here? Yes, sir.
My name is Drew.
I'm sorry?
My name is Drew.
Drew? Where do you go to school, Drew?
Cox Mill.
And what grade are you in?
Four.
You enjoying it? Thank you, Drew. You have a good day. Why don't we give... I don't think there's any more students out at Popper Tent Elementary, or Popper Tent Pressing Church. We had them all here tonight. Okay, on page four, we have the minutes from November the 7th and November the 21st that are provided to us. Are there any changes or additions?
That will be approved.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Board of Organization for the Board of Commissioners. And at this point in time, I will turn it over to Mr. Downs to run this portion of our meeting.
Okay. We're gonna select new officers for this year, so... The floor is now open for nominations for Chairman of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, the, I'd like tonight to place a nomination for somebody that is actually more experienced, been on the city, on the board longer than I have. And I'd like to nominate Liz Poole to be Chairman of the Board for this next year. She, in saying that, and also in committing, and I guess to congratulate Commissioner White for his five years. Is it five years now? Four years. Five years as Chairman, and done a tremendous job for us. But I'd like to nominate Liz Poole to be Chairman tonight.
Are there any other nominations?
I will move to close the nominations, I'll second nomination, move to close the nominations and approve by acclamation Liz Poole, Commissioner Liz Poole, as Chair for 2011-2012.
So, so moved. Congratulations, Ms. Poole.
Now, I will...
Stay right there.
Pass it back to him.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, open the floor for nominations for Vice Chairman.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Larry Burridge, or Commissioner Burridge, as the Vice Chair for the coming year. I think that Commissioner Burridge has learned quite a bit over the past year and has done a lot of service within the community. And I would like to nominate him for Vice Chair for the Board of Commissioners of Cabarrus County.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll make a motion to be close nominations and to approve Larry Burridge as the Vice Chair by vote of acclamation.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If it's okay, can we just take a couple minutes to change seats? Might make it easier on you. You can stay right there if you want to. We can share the mic.
Madam Chair, the only problem is we have two attorneys sitting next to each other. And I don't know whether we want to allow that or not, but...
Only one's billing. We can change that, though.
I think one's enough. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Please notice on page four, there are some changes. Two items to be added to consent and some supplemental information that is provided. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Next up is recognitions and presentations. And we have Debbie Boss here, there she is, with cooperative extension.
I'm not quite as small as some of those Cub Scouts. So I'll move the mic up just a little bit. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening. We want to recognize and honor a group of individuals that have worked very hard on behalf of Cabarrus County and Cabarrus County 4H. As we know in 4H, one of the key things that it does for youth in the community is teach life skills. And in the Judging Program, that program brings all of those life skills together. The members standing behind me are participants in the Horse Judging Program. And that means that they evaluate a class of four horses. They decide not only do they look good, but why they look good, and confirmation and a number of different things. But then they often also have to defend their decision in front of a group of judges, and they're scored on that as well. So what the youth are learning are decision-making, critical thinking, and communication skills, which we all know are essential in everyday life. So I want to introduce Laura Harper. She is our kicking tails 4H club leader here in Cabarrus County. She was the coach of the club team that won the state, that went on to regionals. And then she was also the coach for the national 4H winning team. And several members from Cabarrus 4H were those, were on that team. So Laura, if you'll introduce your team and tell us a little bit more about the program.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having us. We've been involved in 4H for many years here in Cabarrus County. And we have a large, active club here in the county that participates in a lot of different functions. Horse Judging being one of them, Hippology and Horse Bowl as well. I've brought a few kids with me today. Two of them, three of them happen to be my own. My daughter, Sarah Harper, she is now aged out of 4H, but she traveled on three regional, two national, and two world teams in Horse Bowl and Hippology and Horse Judging. My other daughter, Hannah Harper, who's traveled to regionals three times, nationals this year, and an upcoming world team. Mina Greenlee, she's also participated at the state level for many, many years. She's new this year to being a senior horse judger and working really hard at learning and expanding her knowledge and traveling. And then, lastly, my son, Josh. He is one of our youngest members, but he's also competed at the state level for a few different years. And I have seen over the years, we have, we have two other members in our club that could not be here tonight, Kayla Nugent and Brittany Dukehamin. They also traveled on the national team this year. Brittany traveled on the world team, and Kayla will be at the world team in August of 2012. So I have seen the 4H program bring these kids full circle. My oldest is 20. She started when she was seven in 4H. Scholarships to college for equestrian and for knowledge-based learning that she's done. Hannah is a senior in high school and has been offered scholarships for the same. And it has brought them much more organization skills when they have to pull their knowledge together and really make a decision. They have two minutes to judge a horse on each view, and they have less than two minutes to give a verbal set of oral reasons to the officiating judge. So it does really bring them together and teach them organization, communication. Kayla, who couldn't be with us today, was a very, very shy young lady. Took a speech in high school, speech and debate class. And when she had to give her first speech of 30 seconds, was in tears. And we spoke about what to talk about, which for her was horses. Got through it and then made the national judging team, and now is going on to world. So it's been a great, great program for these kids, and I appreciate the support of Cabarrus County. Thank you for having us.
Anybody want to say anything?
Normally in 4H, when you think of horse clubs, you think of the kids competing in horse shows. Laura has done a wonderful job with her horse club in that they are, there are some that do show in shows, but they're more involved in learning the knowledge. There, it's an educational experience in Hippology and Horse Judging. And in Horse Bowl, they're able to answer questions about a variety of topics related to horses. It's nutrition, it's tack, it's a number of different things. And so it's all about the education and communication skills. It's not about how well they can ride in a show ring. And Laura is to be commended. She's donated a lot of her time and her money and her resources to do what she does for the youth in Cabarrus County and in North Carolina 4H. And we are very proud of her and the team. So thank you.
Thank you all very much. It's, it's an honor for us to have you here, to be able to recognize you. Next up, we have Sheriff Ollie. For recognition of Captain Phil Patterson.
First, I'd like to thank you for recognizing our officers for their many years of service. Tonight, we have Captain Phil Patterson. And I'll tell you a little bit about what he's brought to the county. But we honored Captain Patterson last Thursday, was his last day, official day, with us. He has gone on to take another job in the private sector. But looking over his accomplishments over the years, it's been very, very... He's provided a lot of assets and resources and service to our community. And I just want to take just a moment to read you a little bit about his history in the 29-plus years. He, he's here with us with 30 years of accredited service tonight. He's married to Ryan Patterson, and Ryan's with him. I see the whole family's here tonight. The others are just getting back from college. But we're glad to have Kayla and Landon and May with us tonight as well. He was raised in Rowan County in his early goings and graduated from South Rowan High School. Attended Morris Hill for a short stint, and then transferred and graduated from Appalachian State in 1982. Captain Patterson began his career at the Sheriff's Office in 1982, being hired by Sheriff J.B. Roberts. He is the last official person in our office that was hired by Sheriff Roberts. And I think that it was one of his last businesses that, before he vacated the office. And I think even Captain Patterson shared that Sheriff Kennedy actually did the early workings. But he is the last official hiree by Sheriff Roberts. In 1983, he received his basic law enforcement training from Stanley Community College. Upon graduation, he was assigned to our Communications Division, which he remained there for a long time. He was promoted to Lieutenant over Communications in 1992, where his first assignment was to implement the county's first 911 system. Prior to that, we did not have 911. And if you remember during that time, we not only implemented 911, which was a major undertaking throughout the state, but we also implemented E-911, which involved pre-arrival instruction, medical instruction. And he was instrumental in setting that to pace as well. During that time, we were just seeing the first phases of computer, the computerization and technology in law enforcement. And I guess it was fortunate for us, but unfortunate for Phil, that he became our independent IT department during that time. Not only was he tasked with implementing computer systems to the agency, we didn't even dispatch off of computer systems at that time. No telephones, no computers in the, in the office whatsoever. So he was tasked with helping implement a lot of the internal sharing and document saving and all of that stuff, and training all the officers, and troubleshooting the things. And he did a lot of that stuff on his own. He did a lot of studying behind the scenes and did a fantastic job. In 1995, he began to write grants for the Sheriff's Office. He was instrumental in, over his time. And this was done over and beyond what his assignment was. He was never assigned grants at all, except for the fact that he wanted to do that. And during his time until retirement, he was instrumental in helping get over $2 million back to the Sheriff's Office in federal and state grants. So he's to be commended for that. Captain Patterson has also coordinated county's side of 800 megahertz radio system, which is a major deal. When we first had 800 megahertz, he was the sole coordinator of that program. And later, it was shipped to Concord Radio Shop, and he handled the county side of that for the entire county, not just for the Sheriff's Office. But again, that was over and beyond what his responsibilities were day to day at Sheriff's Office. In January 2001, when I came in as sheriff, I promoted him to captain. He was placed over Support Services, which is animal control, youth development, 911 communications. In 2007, he, he went back to school during all this time and received his master's degree from Methodist and graduated with honors in 2007. He's earned his advanced law enforcement certificate. He's a general instructor, specialized instructor for BLET and detention certification. So he does that a lot on his time off. He's received the Concord JC's Young Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, Sheriff's Office Employee of the Year, Kevin Pugh Memorial Veteran Officer of the Year, and the Robert Urie Memorial Officer of the Year throughout his career. Though he has just retired, as I said earlier, he has, he hadn't got enough of it, I don't guess. But he has just taken on a new challenge, and I'm very pleased for him. I think it'll be a good challenge for him. He's accepted a job with Allied Barton, and he'll be working with the CATS Transit System in Charlotte. So we hope to see him around a lot. And it's been a wonderful career. He's done a fantastic job for, and a lot of the stuff, projects that he's worked on are things that you really don't see outwardly. But when you look at it on paper and you see the accomplishments that he's made, then he's been a tremendous asset. And I'm not sure that we'll ever find a person that can take his shoes. But we may just have to set him to the side and put, put something next to him. But Phil, once again, I appreciate the friendship, the loyalty that you have shown this county and the Sheriff's Office, and you're to be commended for your 30 years of service. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'll just make it brief. I really feel like I'm the one that got blessed, but I really enjoy serving the citizens of Cabarrus County. It's just, it was an honor to be able to work in this capacity for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done. We appreciate it. Thank you, Sheriff. Next up, we have David Hampton to recognize Michael D. Stafford on his retirement.
Good evening.
David, I think you probably need to get microphone back down.
We'll put it back to the Cub Scout side. Good evening. I'd like to take a moment and recognize Michael Stafford on his retirement for almost 31 years of service with Cabarrus County. Michael started at Cabarrus Ambulance Service in April of 1980. And I've had the privilege of working with Michael pretty much the majority of that time. And this was back in the days before we recognized as EMS. EMS in those days was a lot different. We had two, if we were lucky, maybe three units covering the entire county. And the equipment was pretty basic equipment compared to today's standards. During Michael's career, he's advanced up through the ranks to captain, ship supervisor, one of only three within the organization. He has also headed up our community relations group for several years and has done an outstanding job with that. Michael was also the first group of paramedics in Cabarrus County, and to this day is one of the most experienced paramedics in the county. Michael is also one of those rare individuals that is never down or negative. And if you know Michael or have been around him any length of time, he's never negative. He's always positive, upbeat, and always has a smile on his face. He's always been there to listen to anyone who needed to talk or to vent, and would always just smile and shake his head with acknowledgement. Michael has trained and touched and mentored countless coworkers, students, and friends. And at best estimate, he's been involved in excess of 21,000 emergency calls in his career, which is just unbelievable. It's hard to imagine the experience he's obtained through all that. He's been an outstanding employee, a great friend. And I'd also like to recognize his wife, Dorcas, and son, Michael. In EMS, as with other public safety agencies, the spouse and the family basically becomes really involved because of the nature of the job. And without their support, he wouldn't have been able to do that. So we want to thank them for the support that she's shown him and us. And Michael, you've definitely earned your retirement. And your position may be filled, but will no longer be able to fill or replace you. And we understand that. And at this point, I'd like to present you with the plaque. And the plaque says, 1980 to 2011, presented to Michael Stafford in appreciation for 31 years of faithful service and dedication. We will forever be grateful for your constant inspiration, your shared insights, and your faith and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to serve Cabarrus County for 31 years. And I thank you, the Board, for your support for EMS.
Thank you. And Michael, the Board is also, wants to present you, Michael Stafford, in recognition of 31 years of service to Cabarrus County and its citizens, 1980 to 2011.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything you've done for Cabarrus County citizens. Next up, we have informal public comments. And I have one card tonight, Bishop Roland Jenkins, Roland Jordan, I apologize.
Good evening.
Great to see you.
Be very brief. Thank you for the opportunity to have me come and speak tonight. But I must say, my brother Paucin is a good friend of mine, even though he live in Mount Pleasant. Mr. Stafford, believe it or not, helped save my life. Praise God when I passed out. So I thank God for the great man y'all have in Cabarrus County. All y'all organization is good in Cabarrus County, which is judges and lawyer. Sheriff Riley, a good friend of mine. And I know most of y'all on the board. I think about two of y'all, you know, I just don't know, but I have seen you. But I want to thank Brother White for his good leadership as chairman, did a great job, and all the boards do. We have good and bad days. We understand that. Some decisions we have to do for the best of all of us, and we understand. Everybody not gonna be happy. But the main thing, we make our Lord and Savior happy. Praise God, we go right. When I stand tonight on the House of Dr. Martin Luther King Events and Programs, I see you had a proclamation in there which I called about it. And I'm still seeking that it'll be annual. One day I'm gonna be gone, but I hope somebody will take the photos and stand up. So one thing about the dream, it's up to us to keep a dream alive, that blacks and whites and all of us come together, as Dr. King would, would remember that, for all of us, for us to have education, live a good life, treat everybody equal. You know, and everybody have a right, and everybody have the choice to vote. And another thing, I must say, as a man, as a man of God, I love everyone. But marriage, when that time come, marriage should between a man and a woman. And that's how the law, the Lord will want it. Praise God. Even though we might get defeated in it, but we must speak up what we believe in. When we stand before God, you know, we'll be judged before that. You know, I'm afraid of the Lord, but I'm not afraid of no one here on earth. But I respect those who are upon me. I'm most of a wisdom man. Praise God, I believe in doing the works of God. And as long as I please Him, you know, everything ever be in order. Once again, invite y'all to all the events that we have in Cabarrus County. I'll see if I can get to Chairman, Ms. Marjorie Smith, to email that to you. Hope y'all can take part in that and come and be with us. God bless.
Thank you very much. And please do make sure that we get the list of events, so that we can make sure we publicize that. Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. If you notice, there are two additions. One is the proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and also the PBH resolution.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is new business, page 79. Next up is new business, page 79. We have Jonathan Marshall here to discuss an amendment to the W.K. Dixon contract.
This is amendment number three to the contract with W.K. Dixon to complete the engineering for the Raging Ridge Road Extension and Bridge. Actually, the bridge portion of this, the actual structure itself, DOT has agreed to do the engineering for that, which has reduced our cost. W.K. Dixon will still need to do the hydraulic reports as well as the coordination of their work with that bridge design. But this will complete the complete design and engineering of the turn lanes at Stallings Road, the road leading up to the bridge, and then, of course, the road extension on the Hickory Ridge High School and Hickory Ridge Middle School sides. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sir.
Mr. Marshall, in regards to the engineering of the bridge, is there anything that can be done to, in the engineering phase, to slow down the water getting down to the Middleton neighborhood? I know there's a lot of issues in regards to flooding out there. And that Bat Creek is an area that, if there's anything that we can do, can that be addressed to DOT and ask them to look at that into their engineering plans?
Well, unfortunately, and that's been part of the process we've gone through already, where we've looked at the conditional letter of MAP provision. The regulations require that we not back any water up any further because it can harm properties above or upstream of the bridge. So, the bridge is designed to allow those floodwaters to pass through without backing them up to any great level. And it would only have a negligible impact on the downstream side anyway. It will not harm them in any way, but unfortunately, there's no way to really detain enough water to have a negligible impact on them.
Okay. Thank you.
And we will, I appreciate that, we will have a public meeting out there, and we'd be glad to talk to them. In fact, W.K. Dixon has a hydraulic engineer who will come out there and will be at the meeting and can explain to them some of the issues related to that.
Are there any other questions?
Do we need to approve this?
I'll have a motion to approve the contract between Cabarrus County and W.K. Dixon and authorize the county manager to execute the contract on behalf of the county, subject to review and revisions by the county attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Say it better myself.
I would like to note that School Board Chairman Lynn Schu is here tonight, so you'll be able to take this information back to your board. It's nice to have you here. Next, we have appointments to boards and committees. The first one is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. An application, let's see, was received from Annette Archer for consideration, and we tabled that in December. So, we have Annette Archer to be appointed for an initial one-year term, ending December 31, 2012. And we also have a application from Jerry Shin for a three-year term, ending December 31, 2014.
I move these two persons to be appointed as noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Department of Aging. A motion to appoint Betty Barnhart, Ann Eaves, and Michael Plowman to the Department of Aging Advisory Board for three-year terms, ending December 31, 2014. And a motion to appoint Jerry Foster and Rosa Santos to the Department of Aging Advisory Board for three-year terms, ending December 31, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is the Food Policy Council. I will recuse myself from a motion for Megan Poole as a family member. We have, let's see, a request to, for motion to reappoint Trish Kramer, Randy Fisher, Wade Holland, Colleen McDaniel, Jessica Castradell, Keela Snelling, and Marcia Brashir to the Food Policy Council for a three-year term, ending December 31, 2014, including exceptions to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy, Ms. Castradell and Mr. Fisher.
I move that we appoint these individuals as noted.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, I will recuse myself from the next one. Motion to appoint Megan Poole, who's a representative from the medical industry, to the Food Policy Council to complete an unexpired term, ending December 31, 2012, and to appoint David Orr to an at-large position to the Food Policy Council for a three-year term, ending December 31, 2014.
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have appointments to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. Let's see, we need a motion to reappoint the following individuals to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee members for a two-year term, ending December 31, 2013. Betty Bab as a consumer, Larry Belk Transportation, Gail Linker, consumer, James Polk, DSS, Kelly Sifford Commerce, Cindy Smart, aging, Beth Chrome, Mills on Wheels, Karen Allen, Mills on Wheels, and Linda Miller, ex-officio, AAA liaison, including an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy for Ms. Babbs and Mr. Polk.
Second.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we need a motion to create a new consumer position on the committee and appoint Linda McDonald to a two-year term to fill this position.
So, move.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Next up, we have a few reports to receive tonight. And we have the Cabarrus Youth Council here. Let's see, Ella Wickliffe and Wells King, I believe, are going to come up and make the presentation with the youth council. And of course, Commissioner Meesmer is the representative from the commission on that council.
Good evening. My name is Wells King. I'm a senior at Covenant Classical School in Concord. And I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the youth council. And this is...
My name's Ella Wickliffe, and I go to Mount Pleasant High School, and I'm a senior also.
There's a great epidemic spreading across not only this county, but our nation as well. Political apathy and a carelessness of governmental issues. To help turn the tides of this problem, the Cabarrus County Youth Council was established. And since its founding, bold young leaders from across the county, from both public and private high schools, have come together to discuss ways to better educate their peers and serve their local communities. Over the past few months, we've experienced several accomplishments and successes. And to speak to you tonight about some of those is Ella Wickliffe.
Since our last report, youth council has continued to meet monthly. As a council, we have taken an active part in Cabarrus County Citizenship Focus for Pacific students. Currently, every high school has attended except Cox Mill High School. We have created a five-minute preparatory video to present to the students before they arrive at the governmental center so that they can represent the youth of Cabarrus County accordingly. In addition, as members of the youth council and the link between elected officials and the youth of the county, we have represented the council, we have one representative as a moderator at the panel discussion. We have also represented the youth of Cabarrus County throughout the state. Delegations of the council attended the youth summit in Raleigh and attended workshops concerning how to balance a budget similar to our counties. The youth council has also sent a delegation to NC4H Citizenship Focus, an event held in Raleigh, where we took citizenship workshops and had the opportunity to meet with our state legislators also. At Citizenship Focus, the council was asked to create an action plan that would make a positive impact and stimulate citizenship within the youth of Cabarrus County. In doing so, as a council, we have identified one of the major problems facing youth throughout the county is that of apathy. The council has created a middle school curriculum that will facilitate an educated debate and encourage leadership. We also plan to send a delegation to the Youth Legislative Assembly in March, where we will represent the youth of Cabarrus County in a mock session of NC legislature. The council has also been active in the local community as well. We have participated in a social service project at Crossroads Church to assist with children in need for Christmas. And we have started a fundraising project that will assist us with the future needs of our council.
Clearly, the youth council has experienced several tremendous successes over the past months, and I'm proud to be a member as it's quickly become an active part of our county. And I'm sure you'll be proud to hear of our accomplishments in the coming months. Thank you.
Can we get all the youth council members to come up one by one and tell us your names and which school you go to, please?
Hello, I'm Taylor Fur, and I go to Hickory Ridge High School.
I'm Seth Bolenbecker, and I go to Mount Pleasant High School.
I'm Harrison Reeve, I go to Concord High School.
I'm Ian Smith, and I go to Central Cabarrus High School.
I'm Georgie Ziyama, and I go to Covenant Classical School.
I'm Tashawn Davidson, and I go to Al Brown High School.
I'm Daniel Hicks, and I go to Al Brown High School also.
I'm Cameron Watson, and I go to Northwest Cabarrus High School.
I'm Elena Dean, and I go to J.M. Robinson High School.
I'm Ryan Heims, and I go to Central Cabarrus High School.
I'm Casey Aldrich, and I attend Concord High School.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Meesmer, do you want to add?
I just have to say, you know, I've worked with this group for the past year, and I'm very proud of all their accomplishments and all they've done. They're a very motivated group of individuals and very smart, and they're certainly the cream of the crop. And I'm proud of everything you guys do, and I'm proud of all your accomplishments. And I really appreciate you guys willing to do this. And, you know, this is something that they take time out of their day just for service, community service that they do. And they're very focused on government. So, each of these students have an interest in government and what the process is and, you know, what takes place. And they really shine throughout that. And they're a smart group, so I'm really proud of them.
I think we're all proud of you. Thank you all very much for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. Next up, we have Cabarrus Arts Council, and we have Noel Scott that's going to come. And if you have a video maybe for us?
I don't want to embarrass her or anything, but I think it's Noel's birthday today.
This is my birthday present. And who could ask for anything more?
That's right. I really do appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you for the board and staff of the Cabarrus Arts Council. We appreciate the partnership with the county and the opportunity to serve all of the citizens of Cabarrus County with arts programs and services. And if I may, I'd like to show a brief video just to update you on what we're doing in the community.
We believe the arts are a critical need for humanity and are essential to the well-being of our community. Arts Council programs reach into the schools and across the community, touching over 300,000 participants each year with programs of excellence. Most of our programs are free or low-cost, and they provide the opportunity for people of all ages to enjoy the cultural arts. The arts make us proud of our community. The Arts Council created a Center for the Arts in Cabarrus County's historic courthouse. On Stage at the Davis brings professional productions from across the United States and Canada to Cabarrus County. Audiences are delighted at the wonderful performers that are appearing here at home. From browsing in the galleries before the show to the opportunity to meet the performers afterward, On Stage at the Davis provides our audiences an evening to remember. The brand-new Opry hosted by Jeff Whittington brings talented bluegrass musicians to the Davis. The Footlights Concerts showcase outstanding regional musicians. Casual, relaxed, and fun describe these evenings of great music. The galleries display five exhibitions a year, featuring acclaimed regional, local, and national artists. Over 9,000 people of all ages visited last year. Trained docents guide visitors through the galleries. School groups, book clubs, garden clubs, and church groups enjoy coming to the galleries. Professional artists talk about their inspiration and techniques at gallery talks. The gallery shop features pottery and other fine handcrafted gifts. Hundreds of people head to downtown Concord for art walks. Independent films are shown every month on our movie screen at the Modern Film Fest at the Davis. Over 200 volunteers dedicate their time to our programs. The Arts Council's most important role is educating our children. Students take part in the arts, provides important art and education programs to our schoolchildren. The Cabarrus Arts Council brings professional performances to 30,000 students and teachers each year. All schools in Cabarrus County and Kannapolis City Schools, as well as several private schools, participate in these curriculum-related performances. Every program comes with a study guide and is directly tied to the curriculum. Without this program, many of our students would never experience live music, drama, opera, storytelling, and dance. The arts open children's eyes to new possibilities and broaden their world. Partnerships make arts funding go a long way. The Arts Council distributes grassroots grants from the North Carolina Arts Council. Recipients include the Cabarrus Art Guild, the Choral Academy, Old Courthouse Theater, Piedmont Choral Society, the Southern Piedmont Woodturners, and the North Carolina Music Hall of Fame. Concord Downtown Development Corporation for Union Street Live and the Spring into Arts Festival. Kannapolis Parks and Recreation for this Charlotte Symphony and other concerts in Village Park. The library's One Book, One Community Program. Hospice and Palliative Care's Interlude Program. The Logan Daycare Association's Music Program for Young Children. The Cabarrus Arts Council is at the forefront of the arts in our community. Its core values are integrity, creativity, professionalism, inclusivity, and teamwork. It is overseen by a volunteer board of directors that includes members from Concord, Kannapolis, Harrisburg, Mount Pleasant, and Midland. The Arts Council's budget is lean and balanced. We're careful with the funds that have been entrusted to us. The Arts Council provides and nurtures high-quality programs that make our community a better place to live, work, and go to school. The arts are all around us. The arts help us define who we are and dream about what we will become. And the Cabarrus Arts Council pledges to continue nourishing and energizing our community through arts excellence.
Go ahead.
You know, I just want to thank you so much for what you do. I mean, my family has benefited tremendously. My kids, my mom, everybody, I mean, they do a great job. And the productions y'all do at the schools is tremendous, especially for the kids to see something. I remember years ago, there was the, just the plays and the kids coming home and wanting to talk about it. And then being able to engage in conversations. The kids remembered Jackie Robinson and then be able to talk to them about what that meant and that part of the country that we were at the time is just tremendous. And I really appreciate what you do, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just to comment, Madam Chairman, the, I remember, I believe it was in 2001, first year, that we actually funded, tried to fund an arts council.
That's right.
In that page year, I'd be sorry, that first...
That's right. Actually, 2000, but that's a plus.
And, yeah. And I think it's just an example in the community of what happens when people put things together. Because as far as I know, that's, we still, a small amount is what we are still providing. And you see what it's, and people can see from the video what it has become. And that's just credit to your leadership over there. I appreciate all that you've done, and the community's benefited from it.
Thank you so much.
And we see how the whole community is just this, you know, has established us. And those people, I think, that may be watching this program, either accidentally come across Channel 22 on their cable that live out in the western part of the county, think the only place they can get arts is to go downtown Charlotte. No, you can come the other direction and get it as well.
That's right. Thank you.
I know you've got... I know you've got some hours this week prior to the Christmas holidays and you've got pottery and some, can you mention about what's going on this week?
Oh, yeah. We've got a wonderful exhibition. It's the last week of the exhibition. It's open through Wednesday. And what people have been really enjoying is the Seagrove Pottery. Lots of people have been coming in, buying presents for family and friends. We've actually gone back to Seagrove twice and restocked it. We've also got glass and other just beautiful two-dimensional work as well. It's, thank you, Liz. It's a beautiful exhibition.
And we would like to encourage people to come and one of the things that we especially like to encourage people right now is to find something in Cabarrus County that you can buy, find North Carolina products that you can buy, made in USA products or services in Cabarrus County, and think about giving that as Christmas presents. And so I think your, the pottery, then what you have available is obviously North Carolina products. And so we would encourage people to come this week, up until Wednesday?
Up until Wednesday.
Okay. And make purchases. And I think there'll be some very happy people when they open their presents underneath the Christmas tree, if that's what they're getting, so. Any other comments? We really do appreciate everything the Arts Council does. Arts are very important for a well-rounded community and you definitely provide that for us and do it exceptionally well, so, thank you.
We'd like to thank all of you all for your leadership too. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have a Finance Report. Susan Farrington and Erica Brown, please.
Good evening. My name's Erica Brown and I'm an Audit Manager at Martin Starnes and Associates. And I'm just going to speak briefly about our audit process and our opinion that we issued and then Susan's going to talk in a little bit more detail about the financial statements. Just to talk briefly about the audit process, sometimes there's some misconception that an audit just takes place once a year and we come in in a week and we're out and I just wanted to explain that a little bit more. The, these are some building blocks of the audit. The audit is really a year-round process. No sooner do we wrap up one year that we are looking to the upcoming year that we will be auditing. We perform planning and risk assessment procedures in the spring. And we also, when we come out then, we do our interim procedures and this is when we look at internal controls and compliance with federal and state grants. Then we come back in the summer, typically in August, and this is where we perform our final fieldwork procedures where we're looking at the financial statements and the backup to those numbers. At that time, we also have an exit conference and then we issue our opinion on the financial statements and submit the report to the Local Government Commission in October. We issued an unqualified audit opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best opinion that you can get. And this is when an auditor can state without reservation that the financial statements are fairly presented in material respects and conformity with GAAP. We had no financial statement findings or questioned costs, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And the significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, compliance, that's related to your federal and state awards. And I wanted to thank Susan and her staff. We work mainly with Susan and Shelley. They are always more than prepared for us and that just makes my job easier. So I wanted to thank her and all of the finance staff for being prepared for us and helping me out in that respect. And also wanted to thank you for allowing us to continue as your auditors. We don't take that relationship lightly and we appreciate that. We look forward to working with you in the future.
I want to just do a little bit of overview of the audit for this year. Each year, we do have to have an audit by law, so we try and get out of each year, but we can't. So we have to do that. This year, we are preparing for the auditors and they come in August, so we have a busy, busy time during the summer. Towards the end of August, they'll come in for about a week, week and a half. We're going back and forth for different things they need, detesting and compliance. And then we prepare the CAFR, which is Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And this is prepared, it has due to the state before the end of October. We did get that turned in on time this year. And also after that, we're then preparing to issue the statements for the GFOA Award for Reporting Excellency. Happy to report that we did, for the 2010 CAFR, received the award. That was the 26th year in a row that we've received the award. And I have submitted it in December for the 2011 audit, so we'll find out probably April or May timeframe. So hopefully we'll be 27 years next year when we come to report to you. Also want to thank the staff each year because we do put in a lot of time during that time of year and it's a busy time of year when you're summertime, when you want to be outside and you're, we're working. Because we're working diligently to try and get everything ready. So all the staff is very, very cooperative and everybody's just very considerate in trying to get their work done on time and they know that order of things has to be done to get things done. The CAFR is 164 pages this year, so I don't think you want me to go page by page. So I wanted to just pick a few things that you might find important and highlight those. In your agenda package, it starts on page 112, but you won't need to go to that right now, but just for your future reference. But this year, I wanted to focus on the income statement and because that's one of the things that you really want to look at, what's happened to our revenues and our expenditures. This year, at June 30th, we actually had to, we added to our fund balance 8,357,000 dollars. So 8.3 million dollars was added to our ending fund balance. And that means that our revenues come in over budget, some of them, and our expenditures were under budget. And culmination of both those things equaled the 8.3 million. So I wanted to focus, the first slide is on the revenue and show you where the revenues were under, excuse me, over budget and some of them were under budget. And so the very first one is our abhorrent taxes. Of course, you know, property taxes make up the majority of our property tax, our revenue source for the county. This year, the collection rate was just slightly below what it's been in the past. I think maybe because of economic times, it was hard, but our tax department does a wonderful job trying to collect property taxes, even back taxes, which is what, a good thing this time because the deficiency, our delinquent taxes actually rose. Did a good job on, they garnished people's wages, they do bank cleans, they just make phone calls and payment plans. So the property taxes this year actually came in over budget by 3.6 million dollars. That's one significant thing that our property taxes were over budget. If you go down to the next thing is sales tax. It's our other taxes. And sales tax is very hard to predict each year. This year, we came in under budget and we felt we would be very conservative with our estimates, but it did come in under budget. And we have, due to economic times, we're thinking that people were just, were not paying, you know, shopping like they were. We do have the number one tourist attraction in the state, Concord Mills. And we would think that we would pay, you know, easy sales tax in Cabarrus County, but we, unlike, we're not unlike any other place, we have the economic downturn. We've also experienced sales tax refunds.
Before you move off of that, is this, may we ask a question as we go along, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Mrs. Farrington, the sales tax that you have here is 1.086 million dollars. That was under budget.
Under budget.
So we did not collect 1 million dollars that we anticipated collecting.
This is correct.
A lot of that has to do with the rebate this year from one, at least one or two businesses that got a rebate. Is that not correct?
Correct. We had several, so we call it refunds, sales tax refunds. For people who are nonprofit, just like Cabarrus County, we pay our sales taxes and then you get them back from the county, back from the state, actually. Everybody has to pay their taxes and then they get rebates either, and every six months or a year. We, Cabarrus County gets ours back once a year. But what we're finding and working with the state, they will give us limited information about refunds because retail sales are sort of confidential. But they're nonprofits, we can get some information on them. But what we're finding is some of the people who used to be for-profit businesses are now becoming nonprofit. And so that changes. Even before, we would, Cabarrus County would keep all the sales tax and now with their nonprofit, they get that reimbursement. So we're losing out on this. We're getting more and more businesses are becoming nonprofit. For example, hospitals. If you have the doctor's offices that were for-profit and now the hospitals are buying them up, which is nonprofit, then they're under that umbrella, then they get their sales tax back. If they're buying all their medical supplies or construction is a big part. Every time they're building, hospital's building something, you know, there's a tremendous amount of sales tax paid on a building and that sales tax comes back to the owner.
But as it relates to the refunds that are being requested, we're investigating to see, one, whether or not they're valid, and then, two, if they're not valid, to try and get those monies back.
Reallocate, yes, sir. We're in the process right now of having a sales tax audit and we have a gentleman coming in and looking, you can go back three years. He's investigating and we can actually go out to the different businesses and make sure that they're reporting their sales tax accurately to the state.
And then also, the state is being very difficult in providing us with some information so we can make an informed decision about whether it's a legitimate refund or not, correct?
This is correct. We can request information once a year and we're in the process of doing that. We've got one year's worth of information and probably soon we'll get another year's worth of information for that. Any more questions so far? Please stop me if you do. The next item is the Intergovernmental Revenues, which is our federal and state grants. It is also under budget for revenues, but you will also see a correlation between the expenses. And the Intergovernmental Revenues are like daycare and DSS grants. So therefore, if we're not spending as much in those items, then we will not get reimbursed as much. It's very, you know, very similar. One thing that we spoke with DSS about was daycare. They were told that there would be severe cuts in daycare. So DSS started slowing down the amount of people coming on to getting daycare payments, but then the state changed their mind. They did not bring the cut. So therefore, we had money left over at the end of the year that we did not receive the revenues and we did not have the expense related to that. We had some staff turnover in different areas and that affects it too, you know, filling the positions. Foster care is another big area. They anticipate each year and they have to budget for the amount of children they think is going to be hitting, going into foster care and thank goodness they did not this year. So therefore, the revenue and expenses for foster care was also down. So that was 1.5 million that we were under budget there. And the next item is permits and fees, inspection, building inspections and fees. We're very conservative during these economic times, so for registered deeds and building inspections, we maybe undercut the budget there. And so we collected more than we thought we would, which was a good thing. Next thing is sales and services and that's where you have your EMS trips, parts and wreck user fees. Sheriffs have a few service process fees, transportation, aging, DSS have small amounts there. We came in over budget there, 631,000 dollars. So we had more, and we actually had more EMS trips this past year. That's the majority of the increase there. Investment earnings was very little. You know, look back at years past and we used to collect like a million dollars in interest income each year. And we're lucky, this year we had 188,000 dollars in interest. Interest rates just are so low and we were trying to be very conservative also when we're investing. We're investing CDs and commercial paper and not going back out any more than 12 months, just trying to be very conservative there. But we did come in a little bit over budget, 6,000 dollars over budget. The final thing is miscellaneous and that's just contributions that we may have received, sale of fixed assets. So it came in a little bit over budget, what we thought there. Any questions on the revenues? On our expenditures, which is on the next slide, I want to go down that, all of these were actually under budget. And this year, we had appropriations for incomplete projects. So we had several projects that were not completed at year end that we have to carry over to the next year. Just timing, just various reasons. One of the biggest ones was the arena storage building. It did not get completed before year end and that was budgeted for in the general fund. So that one would be sent over. We had some grants, ORA money, things that come in that just did not get completed and we will carry forward those into the new year. Salary and benefits came in under budget by 1.4 million dollars. And this is due to turnover, like DSS and the sheriff, you know, not coming on with the housing unit as soon as we thought we would when we started the budget. The accumulation of 1.4 million there. Down for, the next two were daycare and foster care. I just spoke about those earlier, you know, whether you have it, you don't have the revenue, you also don't have the expense, so that sort of takes care of that. Building maintenance, we had, like I said earlier, we had the housing unit coming on a little bit later than normal, so we had a maintenance contract there that didn't get started until the very end. So we'd budgeted for, you know, several months on that, so that did not start until June, actually. And then the last number is 135,000. That's just miscellaneous between the different departments, small amounts and they added up to about 135,000 dollars that we did not have to spend. So the total expenditures was 6.1 million and if you add that to the savings that we realized for the revenues, it comes to 8.3 million. So that's the amount that we actually added to our fund balance for the end of 2011. Any questions so far? The 8.3, I did want to point out, the 8.3 million actually represents 3.8% of our budget. So we were about 3.8% to the good based on our budget. I'm going to switch now to the balance sheet. Of course, the balance sheet has all our cash and our receivables on it and the different areas there. And I wanted to point out here that, you know, the second page of my slide is going to be the fund balance. And that's the main point I wanted to point out this year, unless you have questions on the balance sheet. That's just generic, the assets and liabilities, things that we have on the books and things that we have not paid. I mean, the liabilities are things we have not paid. But the balance sheet is going to be different this year because of fund balance. We have GASP statement number 54. And that's the fund balance reporting and governmental fund type definitions for this year. And this changed the way that we have to look at fund balance and what we call different categories of fund balance. There's now five classifications of fund balance. And there's non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and then available, unassigned. I mean, the next slide, I'm going to break it down a little bit more for you and you might have some questions on this. Okay, here's our components. Right now, at June 30th, 2011, we had 74 million dollars in our fund balance. And that sounds like a lot of money, but then there's certain areas that you cannot spend. So for example, we have inventories and prepaid items, which are non-spendable amounts. We cannot spend that amount of money because those are things that are not readily cash available and ready to spend. So that's some inventories and prepaid items. Then we have restricted. And restricted items are also, they're externally restricted. You cannot spend these. And the thing we have now is the, it used to be called reserve by state statute. Now it's called stabilization by state statute and that's 10 million dollars this year. So that is restricted and you cannot spend that part of your fund balance. Our next category is committed. And in the general fund, we do not have any committed fund balance for that and that's why it's not on this page. But committed is things that the board has to make approvals, a board action. But earmarking fund balances committed, you cannot change it unless it's redone by board action again. For example, we have a commitment, we're going to build a school and that's going to be a capital project. So you make, the board decides we're going to build a school, that money is earmarked for that and is committed. And you cannot reverse it until you make the decision not to build a school or change it. The next area is assigned. This is, assignment is fund balance that the board gives the authority to the county manager and the deputy county managers to make decisions on. For example, some of the things here, uncompleted projects. You are giving them permission to carry forward those projects. And they will still report back to you, but we have to finish our projects, so that's the things that are assigned. So I wanted to go down through some of the assignments here. The uncompleted projects were 10 million dollars. I'm sorry, that's stabilization. Uncommitted projects are 2.5 million dollars. And then the next thing is internal service fund assignments. That's our workers' comp and health insurance contributions that we would probably anticipate needing to make this coming year for those workers' comp. We are self-insured for those two things. Then we go down to the general government assignments and these are 3.9. These are potential tax appeals. We always have to have that on reserve for potential tax appeals. Environmental protection assignments. This is for landfill closure and post-closure estimates. And finally, the 7.3 million educational assignments, this is for potential litigation. The last thing I have here is the working capital. This is what we have decided, determined based on investigation that it takes 15% of our expenditures each year. We need to float. We need to have cash on hand to get us from July till about November, into November when our property taxes start coming in. So we cannot spend all this excess fund balance on different things until our tax money starts coming in. So 15% is 30 million dollars, so that's also there. So when all these things are taken away from the 74 million, we actually have 16,290,000 remaining for appropriation. That's the amount that is sitting in fund balance that can be appropriated. Any questions on that? I know that's new classifications this year, but this is the way that the state wants us to be, to put everything on our balance sheet now. There's questions on those?
Madam Chair, on the internal service fund, you're talking about the workers' comp, health insurance. Does that cover other areas identified and risks that we may have that, I mean, I know that, you know, because it's easy to look at 16 million. If I remember, the public can go, wow. And I've, you know, and I've heard it said from this up here before, you know, we've overcharged the citizens that much, you know, and that's because that's the surplus we've got. But that 16 million is not, it may be appropriated by us, but there's things we've got to also, I think, consider beyond that. We're just not addressed, you know, such as, you know, unexpected lawsuits or unexpected losses that may occur, catastrophic losses may occur that would come out, not just out of 30 million, but also that 16 million.
Yes, that's true. This is the amount that is sitting there waiting for, these are the items that we listed as assigned and restricted and not, but these are things that we know about. That, you know, the pretty good estimates that we're going to need, but the 16 million is not, is available for appropriation, is sitting there, is ready for the rainy day and for catastrophic things and things that were unforeseen. things, and things that were unforeseen, that we do not know, similar to your savings account.
Uh huh.
Okay, if there's no more questions on that, I want to switch. One final thing for this evening is to look at our debt, and it's on the very last slide. Okay, at June 30th, we had $414 million in outstanding debt, and it's down just a little bit from 2010. It's decreased by $9.3 million, which is about 2.2%. And during the past year, we actually refunded some 2001 cops, which benefited us, but we also issued debt too. We issued 14 million, if you remember, for Qscabs for the schools. So on, back in, actually September of 2010, we refinanced the 2011, excuse me, 2001 cops debt, and that's going to save us about approximately $235,000 a year on that debt, which is helpful. And then the cop, I mean, excuse me, the Qscabs for the schools, that's going to assist us in rehabilitating and equipping schools for 18 schools in Cabarrus County and six in Conaples City Schools. And this is sort of unique, because we pay the interest right now, and then we have a federal subsidy that comes back to us for the interest. So in the end, we will have to pay a little bit of interest through the years, but for overall 15-year period, we're going to be paying $25 million to the, for the debt, for the Qscabs. But actually, the cost to the county is going to be 14.7 because of the interest subsidy that we're getting from the federal government. So this is, this was a good deal for us to do that. With that, I'm going to see if there's any questions. I know it went pretty fast.
Any additional questions?
I want to point out that the CAFR will be available on our website later this evening for the public under Cabarrus County's website.
One other comment, I guess, question too. Susan, the, you know, earlier, we've heard from our auditing firm, and I think one of the things that right now nationwide, and it's big news nationwide, is everybody's talking about how government spends money. And I think just for the public's sake, and go back over that, maybe with, you know, and reiterate what was said earlier, is that we have an accounting, an independent accounting firm that stays with us most of the year, that monitors how we spend the public's money. After the audit has been approved by us, or even before that, it goes to the local government commission at state level, who also then approves it. So there is many checks and balances, so the public can have a high level of confidence that, you know, in reviewing this financial report, that their money is being spent according to the laws and according to what the priorities this board has set.
That's correct. Eric and I both have to attend CPE training every year and keep up the breast, but Martin Starr is one thing to point out for them, they have over, when we first hired them, we had 27 out of 100 counties, but probably 30-plus now of the 100 counties. So they're pretty familiar when they come in, they know what to look for, and some things she will question me about, have you done this, because she's seen it in other counties. So it's a wealth of information by just using them. But yes, we're constantly checking in balances within the finance department, and then the auditors, local, I mean, auditors coming from Martin Starr's, and like you said, the local government commission, you know, goes through everything, the fine-tooth comb also. And then the GFOA award actually benefits too, because they'll find stuff that we've, you know, missed, nothing major, but things we've missed or improvements for the future too. So it's been looked at like four or five times.
Okay. I got, Mrs. Farrington, the debt that we have is roughly $414 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's less than 8% of the county's taxable value, isn't that? I mean, substantially less than 8%.
Yes.
You know, in essence, in our own personal lives, sometimes our debt ratio is much greater than our asset, than not, not greater, that would be foreclosure or bankruptcy, but, I mean, 8% is not even comparable to most people's life, is that correct? I mean, how do you compare it to our own personal?
One thing I did leave out too, our legal debt capacity, and that might be what you're leading towards too. We have a legal debt capacity right now of like 20, I wrote it down here, it's 20... I've lost my piece of paper, it's like 27.
The debt margin is 1.2 billion.
24%, our debt margin, that we can, so they're telling us, this government would let us, or our state would let us borrow even more.
And we're not willing to do that.
Or not, and we're not going to.
Nor will we be willing to do that. The idea is that we're, and also, our bond rating has gone up by Fitch, I believe.
Our three ratings, and I've got those down for us too.
I think it's
It's two double, AA plus, and then the third one.
Double A one.
We've got two double A pluses and double A one, which is S&amp;P Moody's and Fitch.
Right. Thank you very much.
I've got a question. The issuing of new debt this year, does that include the New Health Alliance building as well?
The, one thing we've done so far, I know we catch up speed there too, we actually refunded some war cops, and we did that in August, but as part of the TIF money that we're doing, and so far, we have not made a payment towards that debt.
Okay, so that'll be included once the payments begin, is that?
No, I mean, that wasn't included in our debt, because we didn't issue the debt.
Conaples.
But we still got to make the payment, so.
Correct, but we didn't, it didn't increase our debt ratio, because we did not apply for the debt, but that is
Okay, yeah, okay, I do recall now, Conaples.
Conaples issued the debt, yes.
But we're still making the payment.
Right, it's part of the payment.
It's like a revenue, an incremental revenue that we'll be receiving for that district.
Okay.
I'll set it.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, just wanted, well, I guess we go ahead and prove that, I think that's the point of what I just wanted to talk about after that, just bring up some. So I'll move, I guess, will you have to, you need a motion to accept the report?
No, we don't need a motion.
No, we don't need a motion.
Do we?
Okay, just presentation.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the financial report.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I missed that.
Madam Chair, I
We have a couple other items that are included in our packet, just for information only. And at this point, number six is any commission members who serve as liaisons that wish to make any comments, Commissioner Creve.
No, this actually was related to the financial stuff, so, related to the retreat as well coming up, so. No, I just was, wanted to point out, and I talked briefly with Mr. Wa about it, and a couple of discussions I've had with her, and working statewide with several counties in far as their risk management stuff is concerned, is that I know at least one county where they had a self-insurance fund, or they went self-insured on their workers' comp, had fund balances, but had landed up using that money for something else and landed up getting themselves in kind of a wicket when it came to pay some claims. And my thought is also that we know what happened the last couple of years with the closure of Philip Morris and the impact that had on our property taxes here in the county, is that do we need to look, I'm not saying I don't trust future boards, but I don't trust future boards, and when you have the huge surplus that we, you know, we see a surplus in the fund balance, you know, in the past, what we've decided to do, made a policy, was that would be put into capital reserve fund to defray us having to borrow money when we were having to build so many schools a few years back. Do we need to maybe look at getting, I mean, an actuarial study of looking at what are, you know, kind of doing the risk assessment of where actually would, where are we at risk? And do we need to put any, you know, money like this, surplus money into a risk fund that beyond what we pay for insurance or insurance payments that would cover if you had, say you had a fire, God forbid, in the jail or some other public building, and you, you know, would we be able, if we had to pay cash for that, would we have the money in the fund balance to cover this, is what I'm saying? And because it was sitting there, many people would be tempted to say, why don't we just take that and spend it on something? Maybe if we need to look at, it's really, I guess, an uber rainy day fund, because it's looking at those areas where we may have risk in other areas that we may not be either anticipating or, you know, as I guess, I've heard the term recently, a black swan event occurs, you know, for the county, where we have something that's so unlikely to occur, but it could be catastrophic for the community, for the county government. Do we need to look at maybe designating some of that money in the future into another reserve fund? I don't know whether it's a discussion, we probably shouldn't have it at retreat or maybe something like that.
I think it, do you want to make a comment? I think it'd probably be better at the retreat.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, yeah, there's no way we do it tonight.
Staff to look at it, and maybe if you want to talk to
Yeah, we can talk about it and put it on the agenda for the retreat.
And if you want to talk to staff between now and then, and we can get some idea of where you're going. That's your expertise, is risk management, so you may have some ideas to share with them, and we can kind of go through. Board members, are there any committee reports that anybody has that you need to share? As always, we do like to remind the viewing public that we have a number of boards and committees that we need help with. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee has five vacancies, Agricultural Advisory Board, Animal Protection and Preservation Advisory Committee, Concord Planning and Zoning Commission, ETJ member, Council for a Sustainable Local Economy, Department of Aging Advisory Board, Food Policy Council, Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board, Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have six vacancies on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Parks Committee, and the Youth Council. And the application is available on our website. We would encourage any of our citizens to do, just like our youth council members that are here tonight, participate. And if you want to make a difference, that's how you make a difference. We're glad that you're watching us on TV, but if you really want to make a difference, then we need to get you on one of these committees, so please consider doing that. Any general comments from board members at this time?
I have one more, if I could, I've been talking more tonight, I have the last year, but, Madam Chair, I also wanted just to say a word tonight, and, you know, it's, we're talking about people being involved, and I want to say a word about Pastor Jordan tonight, I appreciate him coming tonight, because he's, every year, he's been very faithful, every year, been on this board about making sure this board passes the resolution honoring Dr. King. And did it again tonight, and he's, you know, if everybody was that diligent. We have other people too that come into every one of our meetings, and they, they always, always are giving us feedback, but I'll point that out tonight and thank him for being here again tonight, so.
Okay, I would like to say thank you to everybody that is here tonight, and thank you for everybody watching. And I want to, on behalf of all of the commissioners and all the employees of Cabarrus County, wish you Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And we do not have a closed session tonight, correct? So at this time, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.